So yeah, we're ready to start, I think. Dave, if you want to do a roll call.
Yes, if you're ready, I will start with a roll call now. Good afternoon, members. Welcome back to the afternoon of Planning Committee. Could I just do a quick roll call? councillor Clea?
Present.
councillor Evans?
I'm here.
councillor Gordon Smith?
Here.
Thank you. councillor Leiming?
Yeah.
councillor McLean?
Yeah, here. Good afternoon.
Yeah, good afternoon, thank you. councillor Reed?
Present.
Thank you. councillor Rafael?
Present.
councillor Rata?
Good afternoon, I'm present, thank you.
Thank you. Just to confirm, Chair, that all members are in the meeting for the afternoon session.
Thank you. And we have a change of legal advisor, don't we?
Yes, if you would like me to just tell you which officers are in for the afternoon, I shall do that now. Yeah, thank you. We have Julie Pinnock, the Service Lead Built Environment, and we have Michael Wood, Senior Environmental and Planning Lawyer. And the case officer for this afternoon is Rose Lister for item 12 Walcott Place. Thank you.
Thank you. And Rose, good afternoon. I see you've got your presentation on the screen. So when you're ready, over to you. Oh, well, that's better introduced. So this is agenda item number 12. 20/02714/HOU. It's at Walcott Place, High Street in Winchester. Over to you, Rose.
Thank you, Chair. Just a couple of updates. If I can draw your attention to the update sheet. The dates of the previous applications has been provided. Also a clearer map, though, when I was checking it this morning, I realised there was an inaccuracy between the map on page 167. It's actually the map on page 173 that is correct. I have updated the file so that it's the correct map available on the file.
Yes, and could I just clarify before you start, Rose? That the title says retrospective application for works to courtyard garden. Then, under proposal, it's got regularised works to the garden area, including installation of a pergola and the layout of the courtyard. But then also, we've got amended plans to change the flue pipe of the pizza oven. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes. So it's a retrospective application for works within the courtyard garden. These are including a new pergola, the moving of the pizza oven from another site within the application site, the erection of a fence, and the amended plans made changes to the flue pipe for the pizza oven.
Okay, thank you. So when you're ready with your presentation?
Okay, so here we have the red line plan. Sorry, Chair, we're just having an issue with the mouse. Okay. And here we have an aerial view of the site. As you can see, it's a very highly densely populated area. The courtyard can just be seen here, at the end of the red arrow. Here we have the proposed site plan. You can see the pergola at the top end here. And there are some paving works along here, leading to the extension and the main dwelling. Here we have the two site plans, one without the pergola on the left-hand side that you can see. The pizza oven is in the top-left corner here, at the point of the cursor. There is an outdoor kitchen area here, and the fence runs along the eastern boundary here. On the right-hand side, you can see the same plan but with the pergola in place. Here we have some cross-sections of the site. So at the top, you can see a cross-section. This is looking north. You can see the pizza oven in the left-hand side here. And you can see the level changes between Staple Gardens on the right-hand side of this map here. It's approximately half a metre lower than the application site. At the bottom, you can see the eastern boundary, the fence that's been erected. You can see in the darker colour at the bottom here. It's approximately 2.8 metres at its highest from the side of Staple Gardens, and 2.3 metres from the Staple Gardens aspect at its lowest. From the application site, it's approximately 1.8 metres at its lowest and 2.3 at its highest. A couple more sections. So this is looking west at the top. The view from Staple Gardens with the fence shown here in the darker shade, and then a level change up to the courtyard with the outdoor kitchen and the pizza oven. On the bottom, we have the section looking south. You can see on the right-hand side, there is the level change at the top going to approximately 2.3 metres higher than the application site. It's gone too far. And again. There we go. Here we have some photos of the site. At the top, this is a picture of the listed building. There was some cladding originally. This has been removed. Condition one requires that... or condition two, I'm sorry, requires that this wall is made good as part of the permission. At the bottom, we have a view towards Staple Gardens from the courtyard area. So this is looking east towards Staple Gardens. You can see their balconies at the top of this picture. Here at the top, we have a photo of the pizza oven. You can see the level change there. This is to the other side where we have cladding to the wall. This will be the approximate location of where the flue will be raised up to run alongside this wall here. This wall here, and above the roof line of this building. And finally, we have a view of the fence. This is at its lower side. So it's approximately 1.8 metres in this view from the side of Staple Gardens. You can just see at the top here. It's approximately 2.3 metres on their side. And at the bottom, you can see the pergola. This is taken from the other side, from the north. You can see that a small amount of the pergola is visible from their amenity space. And the flue would be moved to go up this wall here. The recommendation is to permit. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Rose. Before we carry on with public speaking, could I just check that everybody has got their microphone on mute? Because there's an awful lot of background disturbance. That's perfect, there isn't any now. So we go into public speaking. And the first speaker is the objector, Professor Keith Baker. Good afternoon, Professor Baker. Professor Baker, if you'd like to put your camera...
Yes, can you now?
Yes, and do you want to put your camera on?
Good afternoon. The camera looks good.
Sorry, but...
The camera is on.
Does your camera go on?
It should be on.
No, we can hear you, so that's fine.
It's indicated that the camera is on.
Always nice to see people.
I understand. It's showing me the camera is on.
It's not, but not to worry.
Okay.
When you're ready, you have three minutes.
I'm ready now.
Okay, great. And I will have to stop you if you're still speaking after three minutes, but of course you may finish your sentence. So when you're ready, the clock will appear on the screen. And you have three minutes.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak to the main issues in our earlier written submission. My comments relate to the original application. However, I am aware that some changes to the plan have already been made. We have five main concerns to draw to the attention of the committee. These are: one, the application makes no mention of the installation of a substantive domed pizza oven within the area of the courtyard. Two, it ignores the need for a pizza oven to have an appropriate flue structure to safely disperse the very hot gases, smoke and odours above the level of surrounding buildings. Three, it makes no mention of the likely noise pollution through the open structure of the pergola, the potential for reverberation of sounds off the closely surrounding buildings, and the likely acoustic amplification effect are not addressed. Four, it makes no mention of the existing emergency exit, right-of-access onto and across the private gardens of St Paul's Place. Five, it makes no reference to the sighting of two large pressurised gas containers on the land of St Paul's Place. We have four requests to put to the committee. One, the application in its original form should not be approved without an acceptable extended flue structure for the pizza oven. We understand the application has now been submitted a revised plan dated the 16th of March 2021, containing a minimal flue structure. But, like the suggestion we made, this may not bend high enough to satisfy the regulations, and the design may have to be revisited. Two, we would ask the committee to be mindful of the noise pollution effects of the unique setting of the courtyard in relation to the closely surrounding buildings, to only allow development that fully recognises the rights of those living in some 20 dwellings overlooking the courtyard, knowing that if there were to be frequent events involving loud music and party celebrations, it can have an adverse effect on the neighbours' quality of life, the reputation of the area, and the inevitable negative effect on renting and selling property. Three, we would also ask the committee to require the large unprotected containers, now actually removed from the land of St Paul's Place, to be permanently re-sighted on the land within the boundary of Walcott House Development. Four, lastly, we respectfully ask the committee to require the applicant to clarify the continuation or otherwise of the right-of-access across the land of St Paul's Place.
Okay, thank you. I'll have to stop you there. Thank you very much. But we've heard what that point was. Thank you very much. So, members of the committee, do you have any points of clarification that you want to ask Professor Baker?
I have a question, Chair, if that's okay?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Professor Baker. Can you just describe to us that you mentioned emergency access required? Is that from the back of... the back of, what's it called?
Walcott Place.
Walcott Place, yes.
Yes.
Does that go across the actual site that we're talking about with all the cladding on the walls and things?
Yes. Originally, when the plan to redevelop Walcott House into multiple dwellings was made, there was a right-of-access up where the cooking facilities are now, to the perimeter fence and the gates there, onto the land that belongs to St Paul's Place. The gates still exist, but the steps up to the gate have been removed as part of this development. And we're unsure whether the access rights have been taken away or asked to be taken away, or whether they still exist.
Did those rights appear in your deeds?
As I understand, yes. And they were to give the owners and residents of the dwellings of Walcott House, emergency exit round the back and up onto the land of St Paul's Place.
Okay, thank you. We can raise that with the officer later. Thank you very much, thank you. Councillors Reed and Leiming have questions, Chair.
Thank you. councillor Reed?
Chairman, the vice-chairman has already asked the question I was going to inquire. I look forward to hearing a legal answer later on.
Yeah, thank you. councillor Leiming?
Yes, thank you. You mentioned gas cylinders were stored other than on this property. Is that correct?
There have been two large gas containers. Either canagas or propane gas, I guess to fire up the pizza oven and the cooking facilities placed on the land belonging to St Paul's Place. They have now been removed very recently. I checked yesterday morning. They have now been removed. But we would ask the council, to ask the developers to permanently relocate them on the land of Walcott Place Development and not on the land belonging to St Paul's Place.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions, Vice-Chair?
No further questions for Professor Baker, Chair, thank you.
Thank you. So we'll move on to the supporter and I think the applicant, Mr Matthias. Is it Matthias?
Yes, hi, Matthias. Hi.
Right. Can you turn your camera? Great, yeah. So when you're ready, you probably heard me say I have to stop you after three minutes, but please finish your sentence. And when you're ready and start speaking, the clock will come up on the screen. So over to you. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Just picking up on a couple of the points highlighted a minute ago. The emergency exit, I don't believe is required anymore because it was linked to commercial status of the building. It's now residential and it's all going to be one building. And we had shared access for bins at the back where they are now being relocated again. We've decided, well, it's been agreed between people that own that land and myself, to relocate the bins. We're working with the council at the moment to find a new place for them. The gas bottles, as they highlighted, were there. They have now been permanently plumbed internally in our area. And the pizza oven itself, there's a highlight around smoke. It's a DEFRA exempt pizza oven, so it's been designed for use in smoke-controlled zones. As for the pergola and, what do we calling it, the framework around the sides, that was just done for an element of privacy, as it's been highlighted. There's people looking in from lots of angles, so that's the only reason that's been put in. And I thought it would upgrade the whole area. As for that, I'm happy to... that's all I need to say really.
Okay, thank you. There might be some question clarification. So could I start? I did note, I mean, retrospective applications are allowable at your own risk. But having put the first lot of applications in as retrospective, did it not occur to you that with these works, that you would have needed planning permission?
If I'm completely honest, I didn't, because I saw that it wasn't... I didn't believe that area was listed, all the areas I was working with, and it was just... I was upgrading the area and I didn't believe there was going to be this much resistance in it. And again, with the pizza oven, it had already been approved in that area before. So for me, it was just... it was an assumption, incorrectly agreed, but it was an incorrect decision on my behalf. But I did believe it to be within the guidelines.
Thank you. If I may ask you another question before you move away from me. I didn't quite hear what you said about the emergency exit, so if you could just repeat that.
Sorry, I wasn't being very clear. Yeah, so the emergency exit, from what I understand, when I bought the property, was because it was a commercial building, that's what that emergency exit was for. It was a fire regulation. The whole property is now going to be one. There's more than one exit out of the building. And that in itself means I don't believe we needed that fire exit there. And it was mainly used, when I took it over, to access the bins. And now that I've been asked to relocate my bins, I felt there was no need to have those stairs.
Okay, thank you. There might be some more questions. Vice-Chair?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I have a question, if that's okay, Mr Matthias. So at the moment, on the plans that we are seeing on page 176, I don't know if you can see that. The pizza oven is in the top-left-hand corner. Is that... although I did hear that it had been... it was going to be, or it had been relocated. So is that its final position, sort of opposite the kitchen area?
Yes.
And the flue is therefore going to come back from there, underneath presumably the pergola, and then up along the wall of the house? Is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, from my business, we build a lot of metalwork and flue works and things, so I can design it, build it in any way that suits the requirements.
Lovely, okay. And can I ask, did you consult with or discuss with your immediate neighbours? Because they're very immediate, aren't they? We've seen... We have, in fact, in the past, been to this site for a site visit, I think, before the construction of the lean-to... sort of lean-to extension. So we've all seen, well, a lot of us have seen how close cheek by jowl that little area is with near neighbours and their amenity area. I can imagine that a lot of their amenity area is quite impacted by all this cladding. Can you just tell me, did you talk to your neighbours about it at all?
I didn't know. I just followed the guidelines of the heights that were allowed. And the one that was currently, or was up previously, was very ugly. It was put in by me at the day of build. It was mouldy and I saw this as an upgrade. So I thought I was doing something good for the area.
Well, it does look lovely from your point of view, but I'm concerned about your neighbours, really. But thank you very much, Mr Matthias. Councillor Reed, Chair, has a question. Thank you.
Councillor Reed, thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. It's a subject which hasn't really been approached, but I noticed, looking at the various photographs on page 180, that there are a number of light fittings around. Are these light fittings the ones that look like they shine both upwards and downwards? Could you just elaborate on that, please?
Is this for me? Sorry?
Yes.
Yeah, hi. They do shine into the garden, the greenery that we've got. Yeah, so the ones at the back do point up and down, but they're not very bright from my point of view. But yes, they do point up and down.
And this is over the work surfaces. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions, Vice-Chair?
I've just thought of one myself, actually, Chair. Is that possible to come back again? Sorry, Matthias. So neighbours have been concerned about noise from parties and such like. I wonder if you can say anything that will reassure your neighbours about that aspect?
I mean, I'm respectful to my neighbours and I do everything with concern of my neighbours. And I'm trying to be as respectful as possible. Obviously, I do sit out there and we do have conversations with friends and we do enjoy the afternoons out there. We do not by any means take liberties or break any rules and I am there to be talked to if needed. So, yeah. Either with the pergola or without the pergola, the area, it's a sitting area, I will still be using it. So I don't see why a pergola comes into that decision.
You wouldn't like to say you won't be having any events, social gatherings after 11pm or something, just to reassure people?
Yes, no, no. So, for example, it was my birthday a couple of days ago. We sat out there and enjoyed the evening with my friends. It was four of us. And then they left and it was... I like to think we were within the rules and regulations.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I believe there has been a hand put up, but I haven't checked that, Vice-Chair. But Professor Baker, you've got your hand up.
I have a question.
I can't allow you to speak again. You've spoken as the objector in that spot.
Ask a question.
No, I'm awfully sorry, yeah.
No?
No, I'm sorry. I can't allow you to speak according to our rules.
Okay, I accept that.
I'm sorry. Vice-Chair, were there any more questions for Mr Matthias?
No more questions, Chair, thank you.
Okay. Rose, would you like to make any comments on what the public speakers have drawn to our attention?
Chair, would you just like to release Mr Matthias?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr Matthias. Your ordeal is over. But obviously, you will be staying with us in the room. So if you'd like to mute your microphone and turn your camera off.
Okay.
The formal procedure.
Okay.
And Mr Baker, if you could take your hand down, that would be great. So, Rose, over to you. Any comments on what you've heard?
Thank you, Chair. My only real comments are that this is a private amenity space. And therefore, he does have the right to use his private amenity space as he likes. Obviously, it's subject to the planning permission. I realise that one of the commenters has raised that the pizza oven has not been mentioned specifically. The pizza oven has been previously approved, granted in a slightly different location within the site. And the flue has been adjusted through the revised plans to meet the environmental health officer's requirements. So it should meet with the building control as well. I think that's all the comments I need to make. Were there any other questions you wanted to ask, Chair?
There will be, but I think all my questions will be coming under impact on neighbouring amenities. And so we'll move into questions. So we start on page 169. Has somebody got their microphone on? No. We start on page 169, principle of development and impact on the historic environment. That's page 169, 170.
Chair, can I just ask if Mr Baker would turn up his camera, please?
Right. Well, I can't see that he's got it on, but, Professor Baker, would you like to turn your camera off?
Thank you. And we have two questions, Chair. Sorry.
Yes, carry on.
We have two questions from councillor Leiming and councillor Reed.
Thank you.
Mine was actually on the impact on the neighbouring amenities. So I'll wait till then, if you like.
Okay. And councillor Reed, was yours on the first section?
Likewise. I thought we were covering both, so yes, mine's also on.
Let's cover all of them, because it's only a few pages. So let's go back to councillor Leiming. What is your question on the neighbouring amenities?
Yeah. I'm a bit concerned with the gas bottles and the safety of the storage of those on-site. Is there any regulations that has to be enforced for that, Rose? I'm also concerned about the removal of the escape from the building, whichever... from the building, whichever way you want to go. Um, because that was obviously put in for a particular reason at some stage, whether it's still safe to, uh, remove those steps.
Thank you. Um, in regard to the gas canisters, um, I would, I think that's covered by the environmental health legislation. The environmental health officer is aware of them, um, which is likely why the bottles have been removed from their current location. Um, in regard to the fire exit, this would be covered by, um, building control. Um, as, um, the applicant said previously, it was likely put in place due to the previous, um, business use. Um, as the site is now being converted into, um, one dwelling, there are additional exit routes to comply with building regulations. Um, obviously if building regulations state otherwise, then amendments will likely be required. Um, but it's not to be considered under this application.
Can I just ask one further question then? Do we actually consult building control when we're looking at these planning applications to make sure it conforms?
In this state, um, in this case, I haven't, no, councillor.
Because I was just wondering about the fire escape from the properties around this, whether they would have been expecting to use that, uh, escape as well.
As I understand it, there are other escape routes in place. Um, and for building control, a lot of the time, um, if changes are required, this can be done further down the line, either through, um, um, amendments or through further planning applications.
Chair, I just wanted to be clear that those aren't matters that are part of the planning assessment here. We're obviously looking at the, the structures that require planning permission. And I appreciate members have heard things that may well concern them, uh, from a safety point of view, but they are planning matters that we can consider. We don't routinely consult our building control colleagues. Uh, most, you know, people can use our service, but they can also use an approved inspector. We do consult them from time to time and we have queries. I don't think this is a case we have, as Rose said, the gas canisters were, um, something our environmental health colleagues were aware of. Um, and I think, you know, what I would say to members is we just have to consider the planning merits, Chair.
Um, I was going to ask, um, Rose, um, can we condition that the gas canisters are kept on site?
I don't believe we can, councillor. I, I think it's considered under different legislation.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think so, Chair. I think, you know, it, it's something that we couldn't seek to control. It would be an environmental health matter, wouldn't it? Um, or other regulations on, on those. I mean, in, in a domestic setting, which this is, somebody's residential garden, one of the better phrase. I, I'm not sure it would be a reasonable matter for the planning authority to become involved in, in, in the kind of use and storage of gas canisters.
Well, it seems inappropriate to me to, um, put them in St Paul's Place, which is a, a public area, isn't it?
And again, it's outside this, I would presume it's outside this application site. So I don't think we'd have, we'd have any control over that. Have to be other legislation. I do have my, our, our planning and environmental sector, whether he's got any other thoughts. But those are my thoughts, Chair.
Yeah. Um, um, okay. Well, I'm still on the neighbourhood amenity and I have got more questions, but I'll allow councillors to ask theirs before I come in with the rest of mine. Um, councillor Rutter, any more questions on the committee?
Um, councillor Reed, Chair.
Councillor Reed.
Thank you, Chairman. Um, two things. Um, Rose, in your presentation, you referred to the wall of the listed building, cladding removed on page 179, will be made good. Can you amplify on that, please? And I've got another question afterwards.
Um, yes. So where's the cladding was attached to the listed building? There have been, um, marks left on some of the brickwork and gaps in some of the, um, in some of the mortar. So, uh, condition two is for, um, those marks to be made good and the mortar to be repaired to the listed building to make it as previous.
One would assume it's lime mortar then.
I believe so.
My second question is based on the fact that the photographs are being provided, um, with regarding to the lighting. There's quite a bit of external lighting dotted around on the various photographs. And the fact that this is a, a domestic garden, as you already said, um, presents a slightly problem, a slight problem to me is the fact that it is surrounded at a higher level with other properties. So lights that face upwards, irrespective of how low the voltage is, uh, the wattage is, will still show a beam of light going up. And I think what we've got to be careful of is that whilst this particular owner is, um, responsible, shall we say, we've got to plan for future as well. So why was not the lights as part of the report?
Um, I did consider the lights. I'm sorry that they didn't make it into the report. Um, essentially you are allowed lighting in a domestic garden area. Um, from my assessment, they appeared to be at reasonable level. Um, and mostly set away from where the, um, junction with or the main, um, gap boundary with, um, St Paul's Place are. They are generally located above the work surfaces that are adjacent to the wall and therefore as far away from the residential properties surrounding as they can be.
If you look at page 179, it shows it directly adjacent to the gap and facing the houses on the opposite side. So, and that is no work, there's no working area there. That is purely a lighting thing. I'm somewhat surprised. Thank you, Chair.
That's a heater, councillor.
Sorry?
That's a heater rather than a light.
Is it? The one, the one on the upright is a light, is a heater?
Yes, that's what I, I saw.
I think the table might be a heater, but the light is fitted to the first upright of the pergola.
Oh, that.
They're probably low level, aren't they?
They are low, low level lighting, councillor. Um, so I understand there is a concern. Um, I, I don't believe that they would cause a detrimental impact to the neighbouring amenities.
Okay, we'll leave it at this point. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Um, I, can I, has everybody asked their questions? Vice Chair?
No further questions, Chair.
No. I've got, well, I, I had light spillage down as well, although that will be minimalised by the, um, or pergola. Um, but, uh, there's no mention of noise here. Now, as soon as you put a roof on, albeit with a gap underneath and cladding, um, all the way around, you're sort of creating a space which noise can only go out from one space. And, um, I, I do have concerns about the potential of noise disturbance for the neighbours, but there's nothing in the report from the environmental health about noise.
So this, as I said previously, this is a, um, residential area. Um, there are a number of residential area, um, residences in this location. Um, the pergola could potentially, um, focus the noise, um, but it would be downwards. Um, and then you've got the fencing along, um, let's call it staple gardens, um, to help prevent it being over onerous in that case. Um, but there's, at the end of the day, it is a residential garden and there are other residential properties around it.
How many residential properties, Rose, are there around it?
Um, I believe there are approximately 20 flats in, uh, St Paul's Place. And there's three dwellings that directly, um, have a shared boundary with staple gardens, within staple gardens.
Thank you. Okay, there's my questions. Um, and I don't think there are any more questions on the, Vice Chair.
That's correct, Chair. No further questions.
So we're into debate.
Uh, would you, oh, sorry, Chair. Did you want to kick it off? I mean, yes, I will. We have councillor Reed who would like to debate. So I'll come after councillor Reed if that's okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Councillor Reed.
Thank you, Chairman. Well, someone's got to start. Um, retrospective, we're all aware of retrospective. This one is a delicate one, as I explained during my question. The fact that this, um, amenity area lies within the middle of other properties. Um, it is open. The fact that you have a slatted roof, i.e. the pergola, um, that tells you noise is not going to emanate from it. Not terribly sure where that is. I'm disappointed that lighting, which will cause or could cause, um, not only a light, a lighting problem in the area, but also it could also, uh, become a noise area. Not knowingly, because when you're talking at night, um, your voice travels several times, for several feet and miles different to what it does during the daytime. So, um, I do have some concerns that these particular elements on a retrospective were not covered. The fact that you've got low-level lights throwing light upwards. Um, I'm sorry, I, I, I just cannot see the, the sense in that. Um, I, I will listen to other members, um, and then determine what I shall do at the end. But very disappointed that we didn't cover two very, very basic points. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Rutter, are you going next?
Thank you, Chair. Um, yes, I, I, I appreciate that the owner has done his best to, um, beautify what was before a, a, a rather limited, shall we say, amenity space in the, in this courtyard, but it is very overlooked by all his neighbours. Um, I, I think I've received more confidence having, uh, spoken to the applicant about his, um, approach to, you know, his, his, shall we say, um, concern, the concerns of neighbours. I think he's now aware of the concerns of neighbours and will therefore, uh, limit the noise and the hours of operation. But, um, there are eight seats round that table, so that's going to take twice as many. And I know with the best will in the world, eight people sitting round a table, having a glass of wine and a pizza can make quite a lot of noise. So, um, I would just beg them to, to, to have concern for their neighbours, a lot of whom are, as I know, elderly. Um, and I hope that he gets on with the, the, the work on the pizza oven to, to, to get the flu and, and the gases from that away from neighbours as soon as possible. And, uh, and sorts out the, uh, the listed wall. And if, if he remembers next time he's going to do any work at all, please to check whether he needs planning an application first. That would be good, but I, I can't see any planning reasons why we, um, have to, why we cannot, um, support this application. So I will be supporting the officer's recommendation. Um, we have councillor Clear, councillor Leiming, councillor Gordon Smith and councillor McLean for debate, Chair.
Thank you. Um, councillor Clear?
Thank you, Chair. Um, well, I, I feel this whole plan is inappropriate. Uh, I feel quite uncomfortable if I'm honest with you. Um, I feel there's potential for adverse impacts to occur. I'm concerned about odor, light intrusion, noise definitely. And I think it will have an unacceptable impact on neighbours, on their health and quality of life. I'm sure there will be no noise and as already quoted, when you've got six, eight people sitting round a table, drinking and eating, it could get rather loud. So I'm, I'm sorry, Chair, but I really, I cannot support this application.
Thank you. Um, councillor Leiming?
Thank you, Chair. I think it's a really nice kitchen. I just think it's in an inappropriate place. And I think that, uh, we have to consider the neighbours because it is an infringement on them as well as anything else. Um, and I, I cannot see a reason to allow this to go on because it does infringe on other people's liberties.
Thank you. Councillor Gordon Smith?
Well, I have to say, I take a rather different view. I mean, my garden's right in the middle of a town with houses all round it. Uh, I occasionally have people over and we sit outside and chat. I think it's a question of being reasonably considerate to, to the neighbours if you're going to do it night after night. I think that there would be grounds for complaint, but I don't really think that's going to happen. I mean, it's not as if this was a, a pub garden where it's their whole business. So I, I, I can't see any reason to object to it.
Thank you. Councillor McLean?
Uh, thank you, Chair. Um, I've been listening to what's being said and I think we're, we're in danger of straying off, um, planning issues at the death, whether the, the pergola and the fence and the oven are there or not. Uh, Mr. Matthias could still have eight of his friends round and sit in his back garden and eat. So I'm sorry. And he could still have the lighting up because it's not, as I understand it, a need, if he doesn't do the pergola, to have the lights covered by a planning permission. So I think we're in danger of, of just drifting off a little bit from, um, is there planning harm with the pergola? Uh, because if, if he then, um, without it or with it, can still have eight people in the garden, noise is, could be an issue, but it's not caused by the planning application. So, um, I'm trying to find a good policy reason for, for, for voting against it. I can't, but I also can't see um, the sense in voting against something that can be done anyway. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that it, Vice Chair?
Yes, Chair, no further debate.
And, um, just to put my contribution in, I will not be supporting the application. I'm very disappointed in the, um, some of the, the, the specialist expert reports, there's nothing on noise, nothing on light spillage. And I do think the structure, given as it is, has the potential to be very disruptive to neighbours. Yes, of course, they can sit in their garden and have a pizza and sit round their table. But I do feel that the whole building up here of the structure is, um, will potentially affect the quality of life of the neighbours. Um, and there are a lot of them. And so for those reasons, I, I would be happy with a deferral to have further reports or I should be voting against. So I think we've got to the vote, um, unless anyone else wants to speak. Um, um, yes, Michael, you want to say something?
Um, thank you, Chair. I, I, I just wanted to kind of reflect that, um, there's been various references to potential impacts, um, but to emphasise that, uh, those various impacts, uh, can be addressed by, by means of other legislation and controls such as environmental health in relation to gas canisters, um, building control in relation to, uh, fire access and environmental health in relation to lighting. And of course, any matters relating to private land ownership are, are separate from planning considerations.
Thank you. Thank you for that contribution. And, and unless there's any other proposals from the committee, I intend to turn to the, the vote. So this application has been.
Sorry, Chair, councillor Reed has come in with a question.
Chairman, can I, could we have guidance then? Our, is our legal advisor saying that if we put in the various conditions to cover these elements? Is that the way forward?
Uh, who are you asking? Not of the, our legal.
Not our legal advisor. Our legal advisor. And Julie obviously.
Julie.
Back in, based on what I heard him say, what he's telling you is that those matters were covered by other bodies who have their own legislation. It wouldn't be reasonable for us to condition those aspects. But I don't know if Michael is able to clarify that. That was his point Chair, that building regs can deal with building regulations matters. Environmental health have their own legislation to deal with that and they aren't matters we can condition under planning.
Could I just ask a question here? What about overbearing? If you feel that the whole built up structure is overbearing and inappropriate?
Chairman, I think the case officer's assessment is that it isn't overbearing and it's acceptable in its context. I realise members have got some concerns and may have some different views on that, but that's the case officer's assessment that in this residential garden, these structures, this structure and the pizza are acceptable with the flu. I think that's our recommendation too. I understand all the other issues, but they will carry on anyway. They're not things we can control through this application. Mr Woods is back on here, so he can pick up any other matters.
Councillor Reed, do you want a third go?
Sorry about this Chair. These are items that we would normally cover in a report on planning. The fact that they've not been included within the report is really, where do we stand? Do we make a decision excluding them? You know, I'm just perturbed as to where we're going with this one.
Well, could I make a suggestion that we defer this application for further reports to come in to satisfy all the questions that we are worried about?
Saying to you, they're not planning matters? Oh, Chairman, we could defer the case, but what we're telling you is those aren't planning matters in the assessment of this case, which is why Rose hasn't covered them. We're saying to you, you know, this is a garden, this is someone's garden. They can use it and create noise. What we're assessing is whether this pergola structure and whether the pizza oven that require planning permission because they're over a certain height, I understand, are acceptable in their context. So you know, anything else isn't part of the planning assessment. We have to, we can only assess the relevant material planning considerations. So you know, whilst we could go away and talk to others, I'm not sure that's going to change our report or assessment Chair.
Thank you for your advice. Any further questions? Yes, councillor Reed.
The fact that this is a garden, but it's slap bang in the middle of other people's localities. So it's not a garden that's connected to other gardens. This is a garden purely and solely in the middle of residential property.
Julie, you're muted?
All I'd say Chairman is that's perhaps no different to my back garden or yours, other than these are much closer together because they're in a built up urban area. And that, you know, those occupiers and buyers would be aware of that context. It is someone's garden, it's legitimately a garden. And I think in planning terms, we have to make our assessment objectively based on that knowledge and those factors.
Okay, I think probably we've got to the end of the line. Deferral has not been welcomed by the officers. So I think we've got to the situation that we need to resolve it with a vote.
Chair, I'm sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt again. And councillor McLean has indicated that he's got a contribution to speak.
Have you got something different to say councillor McLean?
Don't worry Chair, I won't prolong it.
Thank you.
Okay. So this, this application has been recommended for approval. And Dave will now go through the list of councillors alphabetically for the councillors to indicate whether they are for or against.
Yes, thank you Chair. First of all councillor Clear.
Against.
Councillor Evans.
Against.
Councillor Gordon Smith.
For.
Councillor Laming.
Against.
Councillor McLean.
For.
Councillor Reed.
Against.
Councillor Rafel.
For.
And councillor Rutter.
For.
So that's for, for and for against Chair. So this is your casting vote.
Thank you. And I will use my casting vote in the same way that I voted because I'm voting against.
Thank you Chair.
Now have to come up with reasons for refusal. Rose, Julie, you were listening to what the councillors were saying. And I know that you normally make notes on the reasons for refusal. So I hear from you. Julie.
Chairman, I haven't heard planning reasons yet to the reasons for refusal. I've heard concerns about noise to neighbour amenity, but as we know, this can already be used as someone's garden and generate that same level of noise. So I think, you know, you need to think about why you're refusing this pergola structure and the pizza oven in terms of those structures and impact to neighbour amenity, which is where your concerns are. So I think you'd need to articulate it in that way Chair. So if I could just hear a few, through a few more members on those lines, that would help.
No planning reasons.
Councillor Laming.
Yes, I think it's open touch of that. And I think it's far too big for the size of garden because it's basically taking over the garden.
It's his garden.
There's a structure that covers the whole of the garden. And if you remember David, we've had this before when we've had people put in a lot... There was one in Badger Farm where they had three different pergolas and there was hardly any land left for a garden. And we rejected that at that particular time. So it's got precedent on that.
Thank you. The democratic vote has been taken. So what we're looking for now is for reasons for refusal. Councillor Clear.
Thank you Chair. Well, I'm looking at DM19. And I mean, you've got odor there, light pollution, ambient air quality, unacceptable impacts on health or quality of life for residents. I will be honest, if I lived overlooking that courtyard, I would have, you know, problems about unacceptable health and quality of life for surrounding neighbours. So I'm looking at DM19, Mrs Pennick.
And I would say that I, I think people have the expectation of enjoying their gardens. And we're not stopping the applicant here to enjoy his gardens, but that this structure is overbearing.
Is that overbearing or is it in fact underbearing? Because it's, is it underbearing because it's below most of the buildings around it?
Well, I'll repeat what I said, you know, I'm not going back on what I said.
I just think we got to hear planning reasons, which at the moment we've been told, we're not hearing planning reasons. We're hearing environment. Sorry, can I, let me finish Chair, please.
No, because you voted for it and we are looking now for reasons to...
And I'm trying to help you Chair. Oh, I give up.
But you're not, you're just being...
No.
Well, you've said this, you've said that. Mrs Pennick, have you come up with any reasons for refusal?
Yeah Chairman, I don't think we could apply DM19. I don't think I could say that this, this use of someone's garden would generate any more pollution or sensitivities than it already did in its use. So I really wouldn't want to apply that. I think that would be very difficult to defend. I think what I'm hearing from members, and I just need you to confirm this to me, is that you think it results in an overbearing impact to neighbours by perhaps reason of its size and form that results in harm to outlook. And I think that perhaps is what you're saying Chair. And that would be DM17 then, DM17 bullet point eight, which says it should not cause unacceptable levels of pollution to neighbours. Oh no, that's not the right one. I'm reading out the wrong one. Bullet point seven does not have an unacceptable adverse impact on adjoining land's use or properties by reason of overlooking, overshadowing or being overbearing. So that's the overbearing element in terms of that outlook.
Yes, that's DM17.
Roman numeral seven.
Seven, isn't it? Seven.
Yes. I would suggest that the development would not accord the policy DM17, Roman numeral seven, because it results in, has an overbearing impact to neighbours by reason of its size and form harming outlook.
Could I just say Chair, Mrs Pennick, I totally agree. I miss that. I think that's far better than DM19 that I quoted. Thank you.
Thank you.
And DM20, the first paragraph, it generates noise pollution and does not development, which does not have an unacceptable impact on health or quality of life. I would say that this does impact on the neighbours. There are many of them, their quality of life. DM20.
The thought is that the structures that you're considering don't in themselves create noise, so we don't need a noise assessment. What we're assessing is the structures that require planning permission. And DM20 is about developments which generate noise pollution. So that's new developments, not an existing development that operates as a residential garden. But again, it's a sort of the same point as DM19. I just don't think we could apply that.
But the structure, the pergola, needs planning permission, doesn't it?
That's right.
So in my view, in having the structure with just a small area of chink of, you know, space, there will be noise generated coming out of that area. So you know, that's my reasoning there.
Chairman, I think that would be very difficult to sustain in the event of an appeal. What you might argue out to that is actually a structure, albeit that has open spaces, the pergola does in between the wood slats, or could seek to sort of generate some of that noise down rather than push it up. And I really wouldn't want to be in an appeal situation arguing about some noise spillage out of the gaps in the pergola Chair. I think that would be very difficult to sustain. I'd be happy to hear from Michael Wood on that if he perhaps disagrees with me, but that would be my professional advice to you is that really you're looking at this structure, which is an open sided structure. And I think, you know, we should stick to whether it's impact as a result of its form is acceptable. But Michael here now.
Sorry, yes Chair, if I can come in on that. I would agree with what Julie's saying, that it would be perhaps difficult to defend that reason for refusal. And I also want to flag, of course, that if reasons for refusal are kind of applied unreasonably, then there's the risk of costs award.
Chair councillor Reed has a comment to make.
Could I just say, I'm still on it, that by having a structure which provides cover over all of the garden will encourage people to be out outside, which will encourage generate more noise disturbance. And then it's very overbearing to look at as well. Councillor Reed.
Thank you Chair. The problem, I think, is the fact that we are basing our argument for refusal on two items that were not covered in the report. Why they weren't covered, I don't know. And that is lighting and noise. Under normal circumstances, we would automatically cover these two items. For this, for some reason, we haven't covered them. And I think this is where the major problem comes.
Vice Chair, what were you saying? Thank you councillor Reed. Vice Chair, what were you saying?
I was just saying that councillor Reed had a contribution Chair. Thank you.
Chairman, if I may, I would repeat my first earlier comment that they weren't covered because they're not material to this case. You know, and I appreciate members are concerned about that. So you know, that's why we're here debating that now. But I think as Michael Wood said, noise can be dealt with by environmental health. If there is noise emanating that results in neighbour amenity, there's legislation there. You know, someone used it. I understand what you say. They may encourage to use their garden because they've got a pergola, but that isn't a planning reason to refuse it. I think you're on safer ground if you believe that the structure is overbearing and then results in a kind of a loss of outlook to the neighbours' amenity because of the size and form of that structure. That is a reasonable reason for refusal that can be argued Chair.
Right, well that's, yeah, that is what I would like to propose.
Do you want to take a vote on that Chair? Or did you want me to read out what it was again that I was suggesting as a reason for refusal?
Yes, perhaps you'll do that and then we'll have a vote on it.
Thank you Chair. So I'm saying that the proposal is contrary to policy DM17, Roman numeral seven, as it results in an overbearing impact to the neighbours or neighbour amenity by reason of its size and form, resulting in a harmful outlook to neighbour amenity. I mean, we probably need to tidy that up a bit with you after the meeting, but that would be the essence of the reason for refusal Chair, with members in mind to agree that.
Right, so let's go around. Dave, could you just take a vote from the members as to whether members are happy for that to be the reason for refusal?
Yes, so this will be members in favour of the reason for refusal.
Yeah.
Councillor Clear.
Yes, I'm quite happy with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Evans.
For.
Councillor Gordon Smith.
I don't think I can support that.
Councillor Laming.
Yes, I support that.
Councillor McLean.
I can't support that as well.
Councillor Reed.
Support.
Councillor Rafel.
Against.
And councillor Rutter.
Against, I'm afraid.
So again, that's for in favour of the reason for refusal and for against. So again, it's Chair's casting vote.
Which I will cast in favour of that reason for refusal.
Thank you.
Thank you Chair.
So that brings us to the, so do we, is that the vote? Do I need to vote again? Someone give me some advice?
No, that's, that's the conclusion. Thank you Chair.
No, thank you. So that brings us to the end of this afternoon's session.